The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc. to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 3, 2015 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velco.
President.
Alderman Taylor.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Nussem.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge, Bishop Colburn.
God bless you, Father in the name of Jesus. We thank you for your blessing this week. We thank you for all your blessings this week. I pray for their family. They rob and engine, look food on test, be all over country. We ask for peace. We send a desperate peace over here. We ask for peace, which our city will bring all of our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Item A, it's my honor and privilege to recognize American outfitters for their staying power. They've been here 40 years. Gary and Larry Reddick, when I was a young policeman, I used to buy my uniforms from them many years ago. So, they've been here 40 years, and I'd like to acknowledge that fact. Gary and Larry, would you please step up here, please? And I'd like you to introduce your family. Bring everybody up. Just come on up here. Bring all the Reddicks up here.
Get their picture taken. You got a cameraman with you guys?
Just stand right there, because we're going to get your picture.
You guys have come a long way since 800 Block of Gellingwood.
Mayor, you gotta go down there.
I'm going. I'm going.
They're pretty good basketball players, too, Mayor.
No wrestlers.
First of all, congratulations on 40 years. I've been there for 40 of them. It's businesses like this that makes Waukegan grow and prosper. This business had an opportunity to leave on several occasions. They stayed, they stuck it out, they weathered the storm. Now, I had an opportunity to go tour this business last week, and I have to tell you, I was astounded by what I saw. All these years, I thought they ordered product in from outside. They do it right there, and it's absolutely phenomenal. They employ 60 employees, which is great for the community. They're looking to expand, which is also great for the community. So, on behalf of the City of Waukegan, Gary and Larry, thank you so much for your courage and commitment to the city of Waukegan.
(APPLAUSE).
Larry, you want to say a couple words? Go ahead.
You know, it's funny how two brothers can put things together. We started basically in a garage, and we've worked our way to where we're at right now. We have a building that's about 28,000 square feet, and we employ about 65 people. So, it's been a long hoe, sometimes not the easiest, but it's all been worth it. And Waukegan has been very good to us. They've been very supportive to us. It's helped our embroidery department as well as our printing department. So, we have to thank Waukegan. And Mr. Tempest is up there. I laugh because Mr. Tempest was my teacher in high school.
Listen, everybody thought I was a lot younger. I wish you would've said that.
Well, I had hair then, too, so... I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Mayor and members of the council. And, you know, one of the ones that we really need to thank, I think, is our family. They've always been behind us 100 percent, and we don't always get a chance to say that. So, thank you so much. And like Larry said, the City of Waukegan's really embraced us over the years, and we couldn't have made it without you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you both.
Keep that Waukegan spirit going, will you?
Two weeks ago, Kim Ball came before the City Council with complaints about the lakefront. We made a commitment that we'd correct those problems. Her issues were watercraft on the beach was a major problem. We all realized it, but no one really took notice of it or did anything. There was drinking on the beach, and there was a lot of trash. Those are the issues that Ms. Ball brought before the council. We addressed those, and we know and knew that we needed enforcement down there. So, we placed an officer on the lakefront two weeks ago. He, they issued several citations, made one arrest. We started advising the people on watercraft the rules and regulations of the lakefront. So, obviously, they didn't understand that. They do now, because if you go down there today or any other weekend day, you'll notice that the craft is now off the lakefront, they're off the beaches. There's no longer an issue with safety there. So, started thinking about how we can better improve the lakefront, because obviously, next year, we're going to have the same problem unless we correct it. So, I'm going to put together a lakefront task force. And this task force will address the awareness of the beach, the safety of the beach, the security of the beach, the cleanup of the beach, the education of the lakefront, and when and when people cannot do things on the lakefront. And we're going to do enforcement. So, I figured that we'll develop a model this year to make the lakefront even better. So, I decided to pick people that I personally know have a vested interest in our community and especially in our lakefront. So, the committee that I've selected, two of them were former beach directors. David Motley and Greg Moizio are going to be on the committee. Chris Logan, who's currently on the beach acting as a director, will be on the committee. Alderman May, who's a lakefront advocate, will be on the committee, because I know she will, she's not quiet about things that need to be done on the beach, so we'll take care of that, and myself. So, this year, we will formulate a plan for next year. So, next year, the transition to the beach will be much, much smoother, less problems, and I still intend to keep a police officer at the lakefront, because unless we have an enforcement arm of this, this will not work. We have to have someone who's going to enforce the rules and regulations of the lakefront. So, that's it. Bill, did you want to make a motion?
Mayor, thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to move Item D under New Business all the way up to make it Item B under Mayor's Comments, please.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moizio. All of them favor?
Aye.
Item D on the agenda. I have a very vested interest in this, because it was my privilege and honor to serve with the park district for 18 years, and I know that they're quality, it's a quality organization. They have a great staff, they have great commissioners, the director is awesome. And what they're requesting is, they're requesting, next year is their 100th anniversary, and they asked me and the City Council to allow them the opportunity to design our next year's city sticker. Greg, would you like to bring your group up front, please?
(INAUDIBLE) 100 years of the city.
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 Mayor, counsel, thank you. Just a few words, don't want to take up too much of your time.
The Waukegan Park District was established December 26, 1916, and as we approach our centennial year, we are proud to be considered for the placement on the 2016-17 city sticker. We appreciate the support, the council, and the mayor in being featured on the city vehicle sticker, as it was, it is a wonderful to call attention to this very special event for us. The Park District Committee has been busy selecting ways to recognize and celebrate this milestone anniversary, and open house and fireworks are planned to recognize the 100th birthday, December 26, 2016, in addition to a number of activities throughout the 2017 centennial year also. Just want to run through some highlights. A tent with a centennial logo was used at the American Independence Festival, hopefully many of you guys visited that, and the Scoop de Louvre. The tent will be at many more events over the next two years. We are videotaping residents' stories and memories to create a video that will be available at events and online. Some stories will also appear in the centennial materials. A professional video will also be created to publicize the centennial and to inform the community and others about the Waukegan Park District's 100, first 100 years, just the beginning. A community centennial celebration will be held on August 12, 2017, in Bowen Park. This event will celebrate the past, recognize the present, and envision the future. Turn-of-the-century activities, music, costumes, games, exhibits, and contests will also be featured, complete with a burial of a time capsule. So, we're looking forward to all of you coming out with us this year and enjoying this milestone. In closing, I said I would keep it short. We would like to take this opportunity to thank the City of Waukegan for its ongoing partnership. I love this city, and I love everything you guys do with us. Support for almost 100 years, you guys have been here with us, constantly supporting this park district. And I am confident that as we look ahead to the next 100 years, our organizations will continue working together to make Waukegan a great place to live, work, and play for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Greg, I can't believe you don't want to talk. I can't believe that. Are you sick today? Okay, I'm curious.
Your Honor, I think he should say something. Exactly, I think he should say something.
I think you should.
Yes, sir.
I think you should.
Yes.
Well, I did have a PowerPoint presentation. It's going to take me about, it's going to take me about 45 minutes, but I could probably pare it down to about 20 minutes if you want.
Not that long, Greg.
But no, we've all, we've all done so much together, and we're really proud that you can recognize us. As George highlighted, we've got some great activities planned. And Larry, somebody like you, if you could share some of your stories on the video, really would be appreciated. And Sam, I know you've given me a lot of stories about the South Side there and growing up in Roosevelt Park, you know, that would be tremendous, too. And all of you, we encourage all of you to please participate in that. But we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a fun-filled year with a lot of exciting activities, and you'll be hearing more about it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. A motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve the park district designing and having it placed as our 2016 city sticker. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Passes. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Audience time, Mary Reese.
Two weeks ago, I was here complaining about, two weeks ago, I was here complaining about the work that was done at my home, and I'm not pleased with the work at all. It doesn't look like professionals had done that work. It looked like little kindergartners took corking and just took and smeared it down on everything that they had done, and the floor in my utility room and kitchen. I had wanted that lower, lowered down, and instead, it was raised up, and it's a trip hazard. I have a nurse that come visit me, and she almost tripped and fell the other day when she was there. And then, there's things that was told to me when I would try and ask the people, the city, why the contractors was doing the work that they was doing. They told me I was creating a nightmare and that everything was going to remain the way it was, and I started to cry, because I wasn't happy with the work at all. And so, I felt alone, all alone, like nobody in the world cared about how the work was being done, and I was being treated like a dog that you throw away. And I said to Mr. Ezell, would you please then have them take the carpet up if you're not going to have them finish the work? And he was telling me to tell my daughter to tell me to stop crying, because I didn't know what else to do, because I'm just not happy with the way the work was done. And then, he told me that he wasn't going to take the carpet up, because the carpet wasn't in any other condition than it was before the people and the contractors came in there and was trafficking on it. And I told him, yes, it's much worse now, because they've been in here trafficking on it. And he told me, I have the last word, I'm not going to do anything else to it. And after crying for months and feeling all alone, I didn't know where to turn to. I wanted to write the president and ask the president of the United States to please help me, because I'm a senior citizen, I don't know what else to do, I don't know how to handle this problem. And then, I remember Mr. Blanks, and I contacted him, and he's been helping me ever since, and he's there to support me in everything and in every way, and I don't feel alone anymore. So, I would like to know, the mayor, you said you was going to come out, and you didn't, and I was just wondering. I know you're very busy.
Ma'am, you know what? I did have a conversation. I'm aware of what happened over there. I did, I'm aware of it. And I did invite you to my office so we could discuss this matter. You didn't come. Maybe there's a miscommunication, maybe, I don't know, my fault, your fault, but my door's always open. You come to my office, I will get Mr. Ezell into my office, we will, we will resolve this issue, okay?
I hope it gets resolved, because...
Well, you need to come to my office.
Yeah, because I'm a senior citizen. I don't know if there's more people out there that have been treated the way I was treated or not, because I don't think it's right to be talked to that way, where you're not happy with the work that's being done.
Okay, ma'am. My door's always open, okay? Thank you. Mr. Blanks?
Ms. Reese, come on back up, please. Mayor, with respect to the fact that your doors are always open, last City Council meeting, there was discussion about the chickens. Personally, I'm for chickens. I'm from, I'm a southern brother to struggle, so I'm with that. However, right after the meeting, when the gentleman was discussing the issue about the chickens, you told him to come in your office to see him, to talk with you immediately. Here, you had a citizen here who has been concerned about what's going on, and you tell her that she needs to get an appointment with you later on. Why, you didn't tell her to come in your office immediately? Mr. Ezell Robinson was right back there. So, my opinion, it seemed to me, with respect to the chicken issue, you could have asked her to come in and see you immediately, considering the concerns that she had raised. We are calling our organization, we're calling for the enforcement of all repairs, reimbursement of her $900 out-of-expense money she had to pay out of her pocket. We're calling for the removal of the $14,000 lien on her home.
Mr. Blanks, are you an attorney, too?
Yeah, I'm that, too. Today, I am. I wear many hats. So, yeah, so what I'm saying, these are some of the things that we are calling for. But just in case, no, not legally, I'm not. So, let me clarify that. But anyway, these are some of the things that we, as an organization, are calling for, and that's why we filed a complaint with the U.S. Department of Housing. Because my concern is how she was dis, my primary concern is the utmost and the outright of disrespect. I'm familiar with your, I'm familiar with the block grant department, because I myself has went through a similar situation with her back in 2004, when Mr. Ezell Robinson told me I needed $5,600 to get the $5,000 that I qualified for. Because according to him, I needed to remove the lead on my house. So, I went to Chicago, they told me, is your house, is there anybody in your house under eight? And I said, no. They said, is the interior? I said, no, it's exterior. So, the bottom line is, they told me I didn't need to have it removed. I ended up spending money, so I'm not looking for mine's back, but I am looking for to make sure this lady gets some respect, she's going to get her money back, and that if there's any other citizens elderly out there who have been treated in the manner that this lady had, once again, our number is (773) 510-1713, because we will not stand idly by and watch our citizens here be disrespected like this, and you shouldn't either. You should have called her in, in my opinion. You should have called her in before you wanted to deal with the chickens. So, other issue that we will be addressing is Mr. Arthur Bromfield coming up on August the 10th.
That's three minutes.
His house is towed down by the city.
That's three minutes, Mr. Blanks.
Ten years, 10 years ago, we'd be talking about that.
Mr. Blanks, that's three minutes.
And also, police body cameras, we still need that, because Mr. Tempest was charged with murder, the police officer, because of body cameras, and we need them here, too.
Jamie O'Meara, please.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I am here in my role, excuse me, as the president of the Waukegan Main Street Board, and I'm pleased to announce to the City Council and introduce you to our new executive director, Arthur Cobb. I'll just read you a brief bio, so you know how qualified he is. Art Cobb holds both undergraduate and graduate degrees in business and has a passion for small business development. He believes it can lead to community revitalization. He brings a mix of experience and education in economic development, business administration, nonprofit management, and small business development. As an entrepreneur and small business owner, he also brings an understanding of what can attract businesses and customers. Art was College of Lake County's second Small Business Development Senate Director, having worked in the field in his hometown of Indianapolis, so he chose to move to Lake County. He was also a franchise owner for 16 years. He's currently a resident of Gurnee, and Art and his wife Cynthia are active community volunteers and have instilled that value of giving back to their daughter. I'd like you to introduce, Art has a few, just a few words.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I am very excited about the opportunity to join the Waukegan Main Street Organization. I look forward very soon to meeting each and every one of you, and working with you real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Peggy Jones?
Good evening, Mayor Motley, and members of the City Council. My name is Peggy Jones, and I am a resident of Waukegan and a member of the Clean Power of Lake County Coalition. For those of you who don't know, Clean Power Lake County is a group of 18 community organizations and many more concerned citizens who are, who share a common goal of getting, getting the city, our city, to move beyond coal. Today, the U.S. Governmental Protection Agency and the Obama Administration brought us closer to our goal with the release of the final version of the landmark Clean Power Plan. To give you local context, last year, the Respiratory Health Association found that one in three children in Waukegan showed symptoms of asthma or were already diagnosed with asthma. By finalizing the centerpiece of this climate action plan to reduce dangerous carbon admissions from existing power plants for the first time ever, President Obama is making history and is cleaning up dirty power plants, the number-one source of life-threatening carbon pollution. These protections will ensure that our kids and our communities and American workforce are healthier while also creating much-needed jobs and fighting climate disruption. That is why I hope you will join us for our upcoming events. Next Monday, August 10, 2015, at 10:00 a.m., Clean Power of Lake County will host a celebration at the Steiner Pavilion on the Waukegan Lakefront to commemorate this historic moment and talk about what it means for our community. The following Sunday, August 23, at 1:00 p.m., Clean Power Lake County will host our annual beach cleanup. Finally, on Wednesday, September 7, excuse me, September 2, at 7:00 p.m., the Illinois EPA will hold a hearing on NRG's long-expired Clean Act permit, and we hope that the Waukegan residents will join us in calling for a stronger protection for Waukegan residents. Unfortunately, this hearing is not scheduled to take place in Waukegan, and we ask that Mayor Motley and the City Council call the IEPA Environmental Justice Officer, Brad Frost, at (217) 782-7027 and ask him to move the hearing to a location in Waukegan that is accessible by public transportation. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Kim Ball?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Kim Ball, 2904 Concord Lane, Wadsworth, Illinois. My first portion tonight is just to simply say thank you. Never in a million years did I think my voice would mean something two weeks ago, and I'm sure glad it did. So, thank you for all the efforts, and again, I will let you know that I am here to help out on anything lakefront-related if you need any further outside assistance from a volunteer. Additionally, Dan Sevilla, chairperson for the Chamber of Commerce, and Ron Osterlein were not able to be here. And as a volunteer, I've just passed to you a reminder for their multi-chamber event that's going to be on Thursday, August 13, at the Waukegan Yacht Club. There's been some new things happening down at the yacht club, so it'll be a good opportunity. He was also a franchise owner for 16 years. He's currently a resident of Gurnee. And Art and his wife Cynthia are active community volunteers and have instilled that value of giving back to their daughter. I'd like you to introduce, Art has a few, just a few words.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I am very excited about the opportunity to join the Waukegan Main Street Organization. I look forward very soon to meeting each and every one of you and working with you real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Peggy Jones?
Good evening, Mayor Motley, and members of the city council. My name is Peggy Jones, and I am a resident of, of Waukegan and a member of the Clean Power of Lake County Coalition. For those of you who don't know, Clean Power Lake County is a group of 18 community organizations and many more concerned citizens who are, who share a common goal of getting, getting the city, our city to move beyond coal. Today, the U.S. Governmental Protection Agency and the Obama Administration brought us closer to our goal with the release of the final version of the landmark Clean Power Plan. To give you local context, last year, the Respiratory Health Association found that one in three children in, in Waukegan showed symptoms of asthma or were already diagnosed with asthma. By finalizing the centerpiece of this climate action plan to reduce dangerous carbon emissions from existing power plants for the first time ever, President Obama is making history and is cleaning up dirty power plants, the number-one source of life-threatening carbon pollution. These protections will ensure that our kids and our communities and American workforce are healthier, while also creating much-needed jobs and fighting climate disruption. That is why I hope you will join us for our upcoming events. Next Monday, August 10th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m., Clean Power of Lake County will host a celebration at the Steiner Pavilion on the Waukegan Lakefront to commemorate this historic moment and talk about what it means for our community. The following Sunday, August 23rd, at 1:00 p.m., Clean Power Lake County will host our annual beach cleanup. Finally, on Wednesday, September 7th, excuse me, September 2nd, at 7:00 p.m., the Illinois EPA will hold a hearing on NRG's long-expired Clean Act permit. And we hope that the Waukegan residents will join us in calling for a stronger protection for Waukegan residents. Unfortunately, this hearing is not scheduled to take place in Waukegan, and we ask that Mayor Motley and the city council call the IEP A Environmental Justice Officer, Brad Frost, at 217-782-7027, and ask him to move the hearing to a location in Waukegan that is accessible by public transportation. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Kim Ball?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kim Ball, 2904 Concord Lane, Wadsworth, Illinois. My first portion tonight is just to simply say thank you. Never in a million years did I think my voice would mean something two weeks ago, and I'm sure glad it did. So, thank you for all the efforts. And again, I will let you know that I am here to help out on anything lakefront-related, if you need any further outside assistance from a volunteer. Additionally, Dan Sevilla, chairperson for the Chamber of Commerce, and Ron Osterlein were not able to be here. And as a volunteer, I've just passed to you a reminder for their multi-chamber event that's going to be on Thursday, August 13th, at the Waukegan Yacht Club. There's been some new things happening down at the yacht club, so it'll be a good opportunity for all of us to get together. But this also incorporates Northern Illinois Chambers of Commerce and Southeastern Wisconsin, so a great opportunity for us all, again, to come together. We have already confirmed entertainment, and one of the individuals will be Dylan Kroll, who is the gentleman from Waukegan that wrote the Visit Lake County new theme song that the CBB is using, so he'll be performing that. And also, Dave Fletcher, who is a retired Waukegan music teacher, will be performing for us also some classic tunes and everything. So, I think it'll be a great night, and I hope that all of you can make an appearance. And if not, if you can encourage your teams of people around you to come and have a great time that night and support Waukegan, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Ron, kidney chamber? Is he here? Okay, you're Ron, okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't know who this is. I can't make out the name.
I'll find out for you.
AME, yes? Was it Mark Hawn?
I'm sure.
Mark, you're a terrible writer. Oh, my goodness.
Whoa! I was gonna say something nice about you.
Okay, then.
You have trouble reading, see letters?
I did.
Mayor, thank you, and all elected officials. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and for the job that you do. I'm here on a little bit of a mission to applaud the efforts by the mayor on gaining back some of the recreational facilities that I was personally involved installing about 12 years ago, the volleyball courts on the south beach. They started on it, and they graded out a couple courts. And immediately, I called some friends that donated a couple nets. I went down there and set them up, and immediately became, they became very well-used. We had about 30, 40 kids on Tuesday, a little larger number on last Thursday. It was a great time, it was good activity, it's what we want to see at our beach. And I know there's some environmental concerns that people have, and I think that beach is big and long enough for everybody to have an opportunity to do what they want, whether it be enjoy the nature, the birds, the weeds, or grass, or whatever it is, along with the opportunity to recreate. And if you don't want to recreate, you can lay in the sun or get in the water and all that. It's great. The, the lake is just one of our great assets, and I would like to encourage you to continue it. I know it stopped. I'm not exactly sure all the reasons. But all we needed to do was about 20 feet south, and we could have reclaimed another three courts. And I'm sure they'd be put to use. It's a, it's a great activity. I mean, Waukegan needs recreational opportunities for its kids. I know the Park District has embarked in a, a big effort to get their pool going. I currently use a Belvedere Pool, I'm glad for it, but how much nicer would it be to see an eight-lane facility at our current facility on Grand Avenue? So, please, take the initiative if you can. I don't know what the holdup is, but can we overcome it? Is there enough effort and energy here to grade that out, keep it safe, keep it clean, and give our kids some really affordable opportunities to go down to the lake? Doesn't cost much. You just got to come down there and bring a ball, and the nets are going to be there. So, thank you so much for your...
Mark, I can answer your question. The reason it stopped, I filed a request through IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, to, to make, take more of those dunes out. We, we got permission to do what we did, because the beach was in dire straits down there, and you know that.
Right.
So, what we did was we leveled the beach out. We put the dune sand on the beach. We put where that lip was, where it was about a two-foot drop from the curb down.
Right.
We filled all that in. And Gary Deegan was doing a project for us. He daylighted the Waukegan River. We took the, the large stones, rocks from, they were access. And Gary, we moved those down to the beach. So, that's not completed. We're just waiting for authority and permission from IDNR to complete it. We're going to take more dunes south out of there. But we, we're going to do only what they'll allow us to do.
And just from historical perspective, 12 years ago, when I put those courts in, that was all graded out to fit those courts. And you can see that the grade has been lifted up with the, the erosion of sand from the center of that area to the south. And going back to 1972, when I started a beach league down there for doubles and triples, we had all kinds of opportunities, and we played at the far north end where the sea hag used to be, if you all remember that.
We'll, we'll do what we can down there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next is a motion to approve the regular minutes of July 20th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolutions, a resolution reactivating closing of the Amstutz, July 27th, for filming of South Side with you. What they're doing is they're asking in advance for a resolution to close Lakefront again. David, is that July? Next year?
No, that was the one we did.
Oh, okay, they already did it.
Yeah.
Okay, this is just...
Rich went.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Committee reports, Judiciary, Alderman Moiseo?
Thank you, Your Honor. Judiciary, it's me. Item A, adopt an ordinance amending Section 15-140 of the City Code regarding chronic nuisance abatement, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Just real quick, there was a lengthy discussion about this in the committee. This was to keep us in line with the growing state statute and some things that hopefully keep us above the law and keep us out of court on some situations. Item B, approve a host community agreement between the city of Waukegan and TKG Environmental Services Group for a certain real property commonly known as 345 Lakewood Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before you go, what is, what is this property for?
This is for the environmental agreement with that over there on Lake View that...
It's a recycling.
Recycling tipping.
It's for tires, tire recycling?
Item C, adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2466, located at 345 Lakewood, Lakewood Avenue, conditional use permit for a construction, construction and demolition recycling facility, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor, that was it.
Thank you, Alderman Moiseo. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Safety Committee met this evening at 6:00. The following things were to bring forward to the city council. My first motion would be guarding cabs. And I'd like to read a letter from the police department first. The police department respectfully requests to change the current taxi cab ordinance, 2312, as shown in order to allow taxi cabs to operate with a vehicle older than 10 years old. The current annual taxi cab inspections are more stringent than the state inspections, and the police department can take an aged cab out of service if needed. We have found that some taxi cabs, an excessive 10 years old, are operating very safely and without an issue. So, the motion before us this evening, Your Honor, the city council motion is, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to adopt, as presented, an ordinance amending Section 2312, age, condition, and type of taxi cab, limousines, public transportation vehicles, and medical carriers, allowing taxi cabs to operate with a vehicle older than 10 years old, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. Item two, Your Honor, was, I'd like to read the background for everybody. The police department has requested permission to waive the bid procedure and purchase upgrades to the current video recording system used to record investigating interviews. The current system uses low-resolution cameras installed in only three of our interview rooms. We would like to increase capacity by adding two more rooms and upgrading the video to higher definition. The cost of the project is $14,822, and will be paid from the State Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item 295-6295-26494. We are requesting a bid waiver as our vendor, Microconception, was chosen during the purchase procedure in 2011, and we currently use their proprietary license. So, my motion, Your Honor, is that the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase upgrades to the current video recording system for Microconceptions Incorporated, cost of $14,822. Payment for this purchase will be made from the Drug, State Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item 295-6295-26494, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Receives correspondence from the fire chief. And I'd like to read this first, it gives us a little more information from the committee. The fire department has requested the city council's support and approve to accept the $363,637 vehicle grant, which was officially announced by Senator Richard Durbin's office on July 22nd, 2015. Grants are difficult to receive, and prompt action is needed to assure award of a reasonable amount of time. This grant will be used to replace 1986 fire engine that is old and with problems. As a condition of the award, we are required to contribute a cost match in the amount of $36,363, or 10% of the federal contribution of $363,637. The grant expenditures will come out of line item 307-1307-24489. We, the recommendation replaces time for fire engines is 10 to 15 years old. So, we're a little behind, aren't we? Okay, so the motion before me, Your Honor, is we request authorization to accept the Vehicle Procedure FEMA Grant. The Waukegan Fire Department has been awarded Vehicle Procedure FEMA Grant in amount of $363,637. As a condition of the award, the fire department required to contribute a cost match in amount of $36,363, or 10% of the federal contribution. The, the grant expenditure will be, from line items, are reported before, This grant will be used to replace our 1986 fire engine that is over 10 to 15 years old. My motion, Your Honor, would be, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, the proper city officials be authorized to accept $363,637 for vehicle procurement FEMA grant and contribute a cost match of $36,363, or 10% of the federal contribution of $363,637. The grant expenditure will be made from line item 307-1307-24489, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye. Last item, number four, Your Honor. The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase a hydraulic generator for the fire department's fire truck for mobile and low KW power generation at cost of $8,764. Payment for this purchase will be made from the Equipment Maintenance Fund, line item 10302-024412, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
And that's the end of the public.
Thank you, Alderman Tempest. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Insurance Committee met roughly at 6:30. First item A, authorize proper city official to settle fire department workers' compensation claim, C65-13-00850-01, for an amount not to exceed $31,000, $31,000, 38 cents, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item V, authorize proper city official to settle public works general liability claim, number C65-13-00893-01, for an amount not to exceed $105,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C, authorize proper city official to settle fire department workers' compensation claim, C65-14-00918-01, for an amount not to exceed $81,186.75. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Next item is old business or is none, reports on the communications are none. New business, item A, approval payroll dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Item B, approval of bills dated August thirteenth, August three, two thousand and fifteen, the amount of one million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety cents. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Item C, just for the record, a block party is a party of your neighbors that are invited to your party. You close off the street and you have a party. We have two items before us tonight where the people want to have a block party with three hundred people of their friends, not their neighbors, their friends. We're going to deny that, hopefully. Would you expound on that, Alderman Ziegler, please, we talked to the person today?
Yes, we did, Your Honor. When it was explained to me, I was told there was going to be eighty people. And it turned out more than, more than that.
Okay, Maria, are there any other, any other block parties besides those, besides that one?
Yes, one from Alderman May's ward, and that one's, that one's okay.
So, this is what, what's the address on this one?
I think I have. This one is Sixteenth, Ten, Henry Place.
A motion to approve a block party for six?
Sixteen, Ten.
Sixteen, Ten, Henry Place. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call please.
Hold on, Your Honor. Hold on, Your Honor, are we, are we doing a blanket block parties right now?
No, this is, this is the first one. This is the one that they're actually going to have a block party?
Right. I know, but I'm saying that there were others, I think other Alderman put in.
Right, right.
So, those are blankets, with this exception with the one, all right, that's fine, all right. Now, you sound like you just singled that one out, just, just that one alone, but we're talking about with the exception of that, and I do agree with you. Now, just clarification, Chief, help me out, block parties are supposed to be over eight o'clock.
No.
Am I right?
I think, I think they're ten o'clock.
Oh, ten o'clock, okay.
I think it's ten.
It's ten, all right, I thought it was, I thought it was dusk to dawn.
I, I don't know for sure, but anyway, all's in favor of this block party in Henry? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the issue of the other block parties, does anyone want to discuss those parties? Because when we talked to the individual who was having this party, we were advised that it was a party and that they, they invited
Sound like a beach party.
Three of their neighbors, but they invited two hundred and ninety-seven of their friends.
I think we all, that could be a recipe for.
So, motion. Okay, so basically, what I'd like, what I'd like to do is accept all block parties with, with the exception of two block parties. And I did discuss this with the Alderman, the two block parties that I would hope that we could deny. The first address is two sixteen Cook Court, and the other one is twenty-nine Cook Court. Same party, different people.
Different days.
Different days.
Yeah, different days. Same people, different dates.
Yeah.
Isn't it the same people?
Yeah, yeah, different days. Okay, so, a motion to approve, approve all block parties with the exception of two sixteen Cook Court and two oh oh nine Cook Court. Is there a motion to deny?
Sure.
Alderman Ziegler.
Say yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion denied by Alderman Ziegler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May, thank you. My first item, it's, it's with a heavy heart that I would like to mention the passing of Hank Bogdala. Hank Bogdala was a longtime Seventh Ward resident and iconic figure in our community. Hank loved Waukegan and was committed to the community in a true die-hard public servant. The last conversation I had with Hank, he was at the doctor's office, and he had a long waiting period, and he wanted to talk to me about how we could bury the utility lines in the city. So even while Hank is fighting for his life, he is still thinking about how to improve the quality of life for Waukegan residents. So my deepest condolences go out to his dear wife Bev and their family. He will be sorely missed and always remembered here in the city of Waukegan. So it was very timely, we just were able to dedicate an honorary street for him. And I think his services are Wednesday, it'll be in the paper tomorrow. Chickens, I'm going to talk about chickens. So, at the last meeting, a resident from the Seventh Ward addressed the council that asked us to consider backyard chickens. Personally, personally, I'm a fan of urban farming, and I have friends and family who raise hens in their yards for fresh eggs. When done properly, it's not a nuisance. It doesn't produce a stench, and it isn't noisy. It's a great way to reduce waste and provide your family with organic eggs at a low cost. I'm a dog owner, and I'm pretty sure my pups are more of a nuisance to the neighborhood than if I had five hens in a pen behind my house. That said, I don't think my personal opinion should drive my willingness to vote or accept this type of activity in our city. I really think this is one of those things that has nothing to do with my personal opinion on chickens, but really has to do with the residents' want and desire to have backyard chickens. I know people laugh, but when it's done right, it's really not a bad thing. So, I'm here to urge my constituents to contact me, a lot of you already have. I, I'm listening, I respect your opinion, and that's how I will be guided on this topic if it does come to fruition. I will be guided by my residents' thoughts on this matter, and I urge everyone to contact, sorry, my colleagues, but I urge you to contact your own Alderman and share your opinion on the matter. I think that's the best way for us to approach this topic, is the want of the people. There are cities that do it by section, you know, one ward wants it, one doesn't. I understand for enforcement, that could be a little bit difficult, Chief, I'm not trying to cause any nightmares. But I'm just saying, we should open our minds, there's a lot to learn about it, and I'm just want to, I, I want to do the residents well. So, that's my piece on chicken. I have one more thing I want to talk about, was the lakefront. So we had our public meeting, or before I start to the public meeting, I do want to give a huge thanks to the mayor, and an even bigger thanks to David Motley. Since our meeting two weeks ago, David has really camped out on the, literally camped out on the beach on Saturday and Sunday for the last two weekends, and really is just, not that we already don't know because we spend a lot of time there, but he's really been gathering data on the behaviors and the patterns, and I think all of us are simpatico in wanting our lakefront to be a welcoming place for everyone, swimmers, boaters, jet skiers, wave runners, kite boarders. We want everyone there, volleyball players, we want them all there. And we do believe that we can come up with a plan where we all can coexist, conservationists. And so I am just thrilled, I, with, with what's happened over the last couple of weeks, it is a much safer environment. So we had the public meeting to talk about the Lakefront Active Implementation Grant, and wow, we were overwhelmed. More than a hundred people showed up at the Waukegan Yacht Club to listen and to weigh in. I really, it's really energizing to see that people still care and still want to be involved. There's going to be several more meetings. The city took a backseat, our consultant handled the meeting, we did not drive the meeting, we did not drive the material, the topics of discussion. The mayor was there, I think there were some of the Aldermen were there, I saw there. We kind of took a backseat, and we were just listening and letting the public have their say. It was really, it was a really a great meeting. One thing that came out of it was, a random idea was thrown out to help people to start thinking about connectivity from our downtown to our lakefront, and so an idea was thrown out about the Amstutz. And so that ended up being the headline in the paper, and I've got a lot of phone calls after that because a good part of Sheridan Road is in my ward. The Amstutz is not being closed, the Amstutz is not being torn out. It was an idea thrown out, it wasn't instigated by the city. We do want to talk about connectivity, we do want to talk about improving access to our downtown and getting more people downtown and more people to the lakefront, certainly. But at this moment, we have, it was just a brainstorming session, so I just want to assure everyone that the city is not closing it down, that I've heard that so many times in the last week. It's, we're just starting to talk and brainstorm about how do we get our lakefront active. And the last thing I want to say about that is Mark Hahn came to speak about the volleyball tonight, but he's being, he was being very modest. He actually coaches middle school volleyball with my husband, they're middle school, he's a middle school teacher. And they do, they volunteer their time in the summer to get the middle school kids playing with the high school kids. The Park District was really kind to them this summer and donated the gym, but then some indoor tournaments came in. So they moved the sessions down to the beach, and I was down there on Thursday, and there was about forty kids that came to their free, they set up a tournament, four-on-four tournament, and they sit there and facilitate a tournament, and you wouldn't believe, all the parents were so happy. So big kudos to Mark Hahn and to Mr. May for donating and volunteering their time for the volleyball program in Waukegan. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
I'll pass this evening, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I would just like to remind people that this is the summertime, please cut your grass. There's a number of residences that just, their grass is just out of control. Plan on weekly, at least bi-weekly, we do have a limit on how high your grass can be, and I know in the Ninth Ward it's becoming a big issue. The other issue is garbage. Please do not leave your garbage cans down for a week. If you're going to go on vacation, ask your neighbors to put your garbage out for you. I can't tell you how many times I'll pass a home and the garbage can is out there for quite a few days, and the next thing is it's all over the street. Please take some personal pride in your property and help us clean up our city, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I do want to echo Alderman Taylor's sentiment about this grass cutting. I, I, I know Dave and his team are really out there, but I think it takes some, some pride in, in neighbors and, and those who own these homes, but more importantly, some of you landlords out there. You've done a good job in the past, but you're slipping a little bit. I think we got a much better handle on these banks who own these properties. I think with code enforcement, identify who really owns the property, and I know it was an issue two or three years ago, but we, we're doing a little bit better job on it, but I do, I agree with you. Cutting this grass, particularly now, as the rain come, it grows, so please be mindful. If not, I know Dave and his team will be mindful about writing tickets. The second thing is, is I know tonight we, we heard about the losing of one of Waukegan's great, Mr. Hank Bogdala. What an awesome man, and I always have to say, and I think we all can agree, that whenever you talk of Hank, you can never forget Bev. That is a team that's together every day, all day, and since I've known them from a political standpoint, and more importantly, from people who love Waukegan, you won't find a better couple than that, so. From my family to theirs, and I like to say, from the rest of our city council, our prayers go out to Beverly and the Bogdala family. To continue that spirit of sending our prayers out, Iman Abdejaber. The Abdejaber family owned several small, convenient grocery stores, I know in my ward, I think throughout the city. Iman worked tirelessly at the store, Imperial Foods on Tenth Street, right at the corner of Tenth and Prescott. This guy is forty-three years of age. I think his youngest child was about two, his eldest is about ten. Worked that store every day. He wasn't just liked, he was loved by the entire community. He would give food away, he would give money, he would have accounts set up for people. It, it is a major loss to this city, major loss to this city, more particularly in, in the ward, in the First Ward. So I extend a prayer, I extend my arms around not only him and the rest of his family, but his wife and their young children. So as you go by, and you, Imperial Foods, it's located at Prescott and Tenth. Another store by the Abdejaber family is located at Macalester and Eighth. For those who do not know, that is our Walmart, that is our A&amp;P, that is our Waukegan Fruit Market, that's what they serve as. So I, I sincerely, Macalester, May, thank you, Mr. Blanks. So as we going through, we're sending our prayers, please do not forget that the Abdejaber family. Third, I would like to thank the ladies of Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Lambda Nu, Lambda Nu Omega Chapter of Lake County. They came out and painted the playground area at Carmen Buckner Elementary School. These ladies started at nine and ended about two. There was an honor of, for those who do not know, Isabel Buckner, who was a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and one of the two female principals. I think if I'm not mistaken, Larry, I think those were the only two female principals in my lifetime, and I think there's some come after. But they did a fantastic job of painting the playground. I will might add you, that playground equipment, Larry, I'm not going to date you, and I'm not trying to date me with my age, but it was there when I was a kid going to Carmen School at the time, now it's Carmen Buckner. So I send a heartfelt thank you to the city, and Mayor, if you don't mind me saying, the city thanks you, and certainly the community of the First Ward thanks you. Last but not least, I had an opportunity to attend the community days for, and I said this earlier in our, in our committee meeting. What an awesome job they have done to bridge that community spirit. I know I can remember, and it really served me well, when I was in college and coming home for the summer, that was part of my summer job at Public Works, cleaning up after those fasts. I used to love them because they gave us overtime then, Mayor, I don't know if we're doing that now. You know, you get to drive the big trucks, the, the city trucks, and, you know, just have fun. It wasn't pretty afterwards, I can tell you what, but you had a crew, and that crew consisted of Waukegan kids.
There you go.
Waukegan kids who are in college, played sports around the neighborhood. And we talk about money, and I, you know, sometimes it bothers me when we say we don't have the budget for it. But you're putting some kids to work in the summertime, and you're giving them an opportunity to care for their city. Those same kids also painted the fire hydrants, the curbs. Now, a lot of that paint got on us, more served than the, than the curbs and the, the curbs and the firehards, but I'm going to tell you what that built. It built for me running for Alderman for the city of Waukegan, because it, it gave me a sense of pride about my city. And I can tell you, Wayne, you were not chasing me as a cop, because I was too tired after being out in that hot sun all day. Those same kids, us, I was a supervisor, Greg, you cut all of those fields from South Avenue all the way to Browning, you cut. You were in the ravines before Twelfth Street and Washington Park was, was, was built, you cut all those fields over there. And I'm here to tell you, you take a bunch of kids who were kind of rowdy, and you put them in that hot sun from eight o'clock to about five, you don't have to worry about them being in the streets, because they're going to be dead tired. Now, they might not come back to work on payday the following Monday, but they'll come back Tuesday. And I say that as a joke, but I do, I truly believe that we need to bring back that spirit of those fasts. They, they serve two purposes, Your Honor. They serve the purpose of people getting to understand what this city is all about. And as diverse as we are today, that's one of the reasons I think so, so many of our young men and our young ladies are able to go to different communities, go to these colleges, and understand what diversity is. It's not about black or white, Latino, male or female, it's understanding different cultures, being to be able to function in those different cultures when you get there. Because if you can't, believe me, you're going to leave. That's the advantage of the Waukegan that I know, that's the America that the Waukegan that I know. And it has helped me from where I was, a little young boy from southeast side of town, grew up, grew up in public housing, and look where I'm at today. And there's many different stories that people have. We must begin to embrace that and bring that back for these young men and women who don't have that sense of love for their community. Out of ten, you might have two. I think we need to seriously engage in that, and part of your review of the lakefront, it must be, it must include that. If we ever want to break this gap of killings that we see in Chicago, thank God we don't have them here. Greg sees them probably a little bit up, up close more than most of us can imagine, but we must begin to breed, bring back that pride of loving your city. If we don't, jailhouses and more policemen are going to be needed. Thank you very much, have a nice rest of the summer, everyone.
Alderman Ziegler. Alderman Moizio.
I just echo Alderman May's comments about the lakefront meeting, and then also echo Alderman Cunningham's comments about what working in the city did for him and myself, and many other of the people that we worked with for many summers over the city. That's it, thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Alderman May touched upon the meeting regarding the lakefront. Just want to reiterate that how great it was to see so many people. Please give us your comments and feedback, you can contact us, right? Secondly, I am excited about the, the new federal Clean Power Plan, or clean, yeah. And what can happen for this state of Illinois and also for Waukegan. We have opportunity here to be at the forefront of clean energy, so it's exciting. I plan on attending the events next Monday, the Santa Pavilion at ten AM, and I invite everyone to come join, thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. I would also like to offer my condolences to the Bogdala family on the passing of Hank from my family to his family. And also, I would like to offer kudos to Mr. Marion. A week ago, well, I had two evictions in my ward. One was on McCary and Berry Court, which happened to be on a Friday. And I got a call on Friday, and they weren't actually able to get all of it cleaned up, but soon as the weekend was over on Monday, everything was cleaned up, so I wanted to thank you for that.
So, I wanted to thank you for that. And then also, I was driving down the street last week on McCary, I mean Glen Flora, and I noticed a sheriff's car at one of the houses and they were doing another eviction. And I knew this was on a main drag and I'm like, oh, please. But anyway, he, I let them know the address and 24 hours, he told me, we have to wait 24 hours. I went through the next day, nothing out there. So, I was very pleased that nothing was left on that front yard. And also, the lakefront, I was telling the mayor earlier today, I had an opportunity to go down last Friday. It's been a long time since I walked down to the beach in Waukegan and I actually took my grandkids down there. And they had a good time and I actually put my feet in the water. It was cold though to me. But I did do that and it was a, a nice representation of the citizens of Waukegan down there. And I was very pleased to see that. And the tennis courts, they were in use. There was grilling going on and everything. So, I was very, very pleased with the activity and the amount of people. It was a lot of people down there just enjoying the beach, laying in the sand, getting covered up by the sand, building sand castles. And even in the water, I was surprised that it wasn't actually really that deep. You know, you could go out a certain distance and still be able to stand. So, who knows, I might get out there and wade in the water a little bit. But I wanted to thank you for taking an effort to do little changes down there. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. That's all.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. I just want to thank the response that we received from Public Works. Happened to be on a Sunday, which means double time. Only way you can make that up is work them a little faster. But it's something, it's part of a budget that's pretty hard to, to budget for. We had storms came through the 6th Ward pretty severely on North Avenue, took a tree right down. Another one over in Hull Court took the tree right down across the street. They had to come out to get it and I want to commend the Public Works Department for, for the good job they did taking care of that matter because they had quite a few trees down throughout the city. And those things are kind of hard to, to deal with sometimes. Actually, our, our tree department, probably we have a lot of trees that need maintenance in the parkways that are not getting it. But in my home, I take care of my trees in the parkway myself. I don't encourage some neighbors to, if they know how to do it properly, to take care of your parkway tree. But overall, I want to thank the Public Works for the job they did getting out to respond for emergencies. Thank you, Your Honor.
We're going to have an executive session to discuss matters of pending litigation. Motion by Alderman Valco. Second by Alderman Tempest to go into executive session, discuss pending litigation. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco? Alderman Taylor? Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos? Alderman Newsom? Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Tempest. Second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit www.waukeganil.gov. If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.